Good evening. Good evening. Is it on? We're good. Good enough. In case you don't know who I am, you have to stop talking to find out. Okay, here we are. First of all, I'm Shirley Coyt. I'm your town emergency manager. And as usual, I have a little spiel to give you. I don't want to ask how many people have their go-bags ready, because I don't want to know how many don't. However, tonight I have for you the no-excuse bag. Market basket bag, but it can be Hanaford, or Victory, or anybody. And what you need in it, basic supplies, crackers, peanut butter, water, preferably a bigger bottle, and of course, toilet paper. The never-forget toilet paper. Now, if you put those four things in a market basket bag, you'll have a no-excuse bag. Now, if you want to be entertained, you could throw a deck of cards in. If you're taking medication, you should throw some medicine in. And if you want to be civilized, you could throw a knife and a napkin in. Needless to say, that's not all you need in a bag, but it'll get you by. If you have been to these meetings before, you have one of these. You've certainly had several opportunities to get them. I have more. If you don't have one, come to see me. I've got some still. It gives you all of the things that you should have in your bag. But if you're running behind, and you only can obey the basic things, this will get you through. Thank you very much.
Put that down on the corner there. All right. We've got the, oh yeah, thanks. I'm making those. Okay, where'd that go? Okay. One more brief announcement I was asked to make tonight before we get started. There's going to be a cane ceremony honoring Dorothy Manso. The senior center asked that I announce that, that we're going to be celebrating Dorothy, I believe, becoming the holder of the Boston Post cane as the town's oldest resident, 99 years young, on May 19th. She still lives on Fitchburg Road, so please come and help everyone celebrate the cane ceremony on Tuesday, May 16th, at the senior center. Uh-oh. At 1:00 PM for cake and coffee. And congratulations to Dorothy. Madam Clerk, is there a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did I put that up? All right, there being a quorum, I declare the annual town meeting recessed from Tuesday, May 2nd, to be reconvened. To get the meeting started, I've asked the scouts to come forward. We have tonight Malvern Palmer and Jack Mahoney from Troop 81 will lead us in a salute I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, scouts. Let's give them a hand. They're going to help with the microphones until they have to leave for their troop meeting. Okay. Okay, just, we have the counters. The counters that were here last time, raise your hands. I make sure we got everybody, they're all sworn in still, so we have four. So that's good. We're all upstairs, correct? Mr. Rahala? Okay, no one's downstairs. Thank you. Okay, I think we're all set. Any visitors in the hall? All right, we have a couple here in the front. I've asked all visitors to sit up front, bearing in mind you can't vote, but if there's something on the agenda that you are being asked to speak, or wish to speak on, please be recognized, and then we'll hear from you. I guess introductions, should I dispense with introductions, or?
We did it last week. Everybody knows everybody up here, right? Anybody want introductions? All right, let's move on, because hopefully we'll be able to wrap things up tonight. A couple preliminary matters. As you know, the meeting is conducted along the parliamentary rules of town meeting time, and to review briefly some of our procedures, please raise your hand to be recognized before you speak. Identify yourself, name and address. Once you're recognized, that's when the scouts come, or when the scouts leave, someone else will, I'm sure, jump in and bring you a microphone before you speak. Please direct all of your comments to the chair, that's me. All motions must be in writing and brought up to the clerk. If a matter is finally voted, it may be reconsidered upon a majority vote if the motion is made this evening. If the meeting goes to a second night, an article which has been voted upon the previous night would have to be reconsidered upon a nine-tenths vote. If a vote tally is questioned by seven counters, the counters will be brought up to take a standing vote. If you're confused about the situation on the floor, what's going on, you can raise a point of order, you can interrupt the speaker, but wait until you're recognized to state your point of order, and then I will rule on the point of order. If you wish to raise a point of privilege, which is a little bit different than a point of order, it's basically that you can't hear, or there's something that's interfering with the meeting, you want to point out that, you can point that out by a point of privilege. You can also interrupt the speaker then. Just to go over a motion to move the question, there's a motion that cuts off debate. To move the question, however, you must be first recognized. Just to shout out, "Move the question," isn't going to work. You need to be recognized, and then you can move the question. Also, our practice has been, if you want to move the question, you can't do it at the end of a speech. If you want to move the question, just be recognized and move the question. I'm going to ask everyone to be courteous. I think we did a pretty good job the last time, but keep applause to a minimum. We are here to do the town's business, and hopefully we will get it all done tonight. Again, I mentioned the visitors, they're all up front. We already had the return of the warrant, so we don't have to do that again, right? No. I would note that the meeting is being videotaped or recorded to folks back home. I've also received a request that it be also otherwise recorded, so there are other recordings being conducted. As long as it doesn't interfere with the conduct of the meeting, it's okay, in my opinion. So, I think we're ready to begin, and, let me try to find my notes from the last meeting. I believe we left off with Article 12? Okay. All right. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum to be inserted for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund as allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Lizio.
I move to pass over Article 12.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article 12. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any hands. I think we can vote. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 12? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, the ayes have it. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum to be inserted for the purpose of supplementing the capital stabilization fund, including debt service payments of capital items as allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to pass over this article.
Okay, motion been made to pass over and seconded. Anything to be said? Not seeing any, all those in favor of passing over Article 13, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, unanimous. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury such sums that may be necessary to fund capital improvements and/or capital equipment for fiscal year 2018 pursuant to a detailed budget to be presented to the town meeting totaling an amount to be inserted or to take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to implement the fiscal year 18 capital plan as adopted by the Capital Planning Committee as follows. Transfer from capital stabilization for cemetery and parks for the purpose of a used single-wheel one-ton truck of $15,000. For the highway, a truck-mounted ground-speed spreader control, $46,000. Highway roadside repairs equalling $100,000. Police department body armor of $25,000. Police department exterior paint and repair the police station, $35,000. For fire EMS, replace AEDs, the Automatic External Distribulators, for $23,950 totaling And to borrow for fire EMS, to replace Tanker 1, $490,000. For fire EMS, West Townsend Station construction supplemental, $750,000, for a total of $1,240,000, up to $1,240,000. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow up to $1,240,000 pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority and issue bonds and notes therefore. Also, to transfer from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation for ALS equipment replacement of $56,900. And to transfer from Water Enterprise System Enhancement account for Main Street cleaning, $50,000. To update water master plan, $50,000. For the mainline gate valve replacement, $60,000. And for Meadow Road main replacement of $110,000, and this section is for $270,000 total.
A motion on Article 14 has been made and seconded. Is there anything to be said?
Here we go again, with all kinds of stuff added on to the article that we don't have time to write down, because the reading is so fast. We don't have time to fill in the amounts, where they're coming from, what they're for. I don't think this is the right way to do things.
Comments? Come on the motion.
Hi, folks. Carolyn Smart, I'm on the Capital Planning Committee, and I understand, I wasn't in here last week, but there was some confusion on the budget, and that might be where Carol is coming from. The capital planning article is always done this way. It's all-inclusive, but it has several different funding sources. There should be, but I don't think it was copied into this week's packet, the actual capital plan. You do have it? So if anybody needs a copy of that, there's extras here.
Okay, we do have a PowerPoint-type of thing.
And also, the Capital Planning Committee did include in your packets the five-year plan, which is what everything that all of your departments have requested, and then what was approved for this fiscal year should be in there. With the capital plan, you have several different funding sources. One you just saw is the enterprise fund, sums from capital stabilization, and that's how it's been done.
Everyone, kindly, please keep the noise in the room down. Let the speaker speak, please. Go ahead, Carolyn, I'm sorry.
I think that's it, unless somebody has a question.
All right, question over here, Ms. Leland? Yeah.
I move, we delay the question, or table it?
Point of order, or?
Motion's been made to table this article. Who's the point of order?
Point up here.
Okay.
I'm very confused. Are we voting on Article 14 or 15?
Article 14. Capital improvement?
Then, in that vein, in the fiscal, the Financial Committee recommendation says that Article 14 is being passed over.
Take a moment to take a look at that. Think that's, oh. You're right. Can someone from the Finance Committee address that point, and then we'll go to the point
This one was addressed at the special town meeting. That's why we passed over it for...
But this was addressed at the special town meeting, the capital improvement? Okay, we got one point of order here. Sorry, ma'am, did you want to make your point of order? Okay, Mr. Shaka?
Joe Shaka, Maplewood Drive. If the article isn't on the published warrant, can we even vote on it?
Well, I believe the article is on the published warrant. The question is, the motion can be more expansive than the actual article, okay? The article has to basically just give notice as to what's going to be dealt with. Similarly, lots of times we'll have articles where they don't have the number to be inserted till later. I agree that these motions and the articles are quite expansive, and I think, you know, in future, hopefully, there'll be better course, that the motion will be more detailed. But sometimes, all that information cannot be collected until the time that the warrant has to be posted, and in order to be able to at least have the town have an opportunity to act, you know, it's done this way. Hold on, Ms. Lizio. I know there's somebody up here that, I saw their hand, anyone there? Okay, Ms. Wood?
The article on the special town meeting raised the money, and now we're spending it. So it was appropriated at the special town meeting called by petition, and now we're taking advantage of, we have the money, and now they're allocating how it's to be spent.
Mr. Moderator. So it is the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 14 to pass this article? Not to pass over it? Okay.
I'm sorry. I misexplained. Yes, the money was raised at the special town meeting. By the question that someone asked, Mr. Shaka, it sounded to me like he thought that unless we did both articles at this meeting, we could not do it. Well, the one action was completed at the special town meeting, a second action related to that is taking place at another meeting. That's all.
Okay, Ms. Lizio?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I think that what might have happened is we lost a number somewhere, or got a number mixed up, because if you look at the recommendations from the FinCom, 14, which is the article that we just read, is the one that Andrea was just referring to, I believe, the one that raised the money for the actual capital plan, well, for the capital stabilization. And it says 15 on here, and that's to adopt the capital plan, which is the one that we just put on the floor. I would like to ask a question as to why someone would want to pass over this. I think somebody had said they were asking to pass over.
I think that there was a motion, and that is currently before us, we've had a couple of points of order here, but the current motion, which does interrupt the main motion, is to table this article until, I'm not sure how long we would table it, or...
Could I?
Put it on the table, and we come back to it later, as we did with Article 4 the other night.
Okay, so it's a temporary table?
Right. Someone will have to move to take it off the table before the meeting concludes, but...
I was just curious as to why they were tabling it, or suggesting it.
Typically, could you, hold on, let me recognize you, so you can get the microphone Raise your hand, so they know where to go.
I was just thinking to the end, so people had a chance to look at the numbers and digest them before voting on it.
Okay, I'll try to remember to come back to it, or if I forget, anyone can bring it up when we reach a little interlude. But Mr. Melanson, I know had his hand up. Melanson? I'm sorry, Todd. Melanson.
Todd Melanson, Clement Road. Is there any way you could separate out the water department part, since it's not part of the tax burden, and the money is there through the water receipts? And again, this may be an issue of why the Board of Water Commissioners are supposed to be separate from the town. Thank you.
Are you referring to the tanker? Correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that things are being taken from the Water Enterprise account, rather than the regular levy?
But why can't, why, if people want to pass over this stuff, why couldn't you just separate out the water department stuff? Since it's not part of the tax levy, and the money is there through the water receipts?
Well, unfortunately, that might be a way of approaching it, but, you know, it's all sort of together in terms of capital planning, so that's how it was presented. Ms. Smart?
How the capital planning article is done every year is as submitted as a plan. Like I said, it has alternative funding sources, and one of them is the Water Enterprise Fund. This goes along with our bylaw, that's why it's done like that, so you see an all-inclusive article with all your capital items. In regards to, I think someone asked to table it, we do have the department heads here. The fire chief would probably like the chance to explain his request. Not sure why we would table it.
Up in the balcony?
Meg Margaret Genotar, Maplewood Drive. So we are voting on Article number 14, as it is listed in this packet. So I'm very confused as to why the Board of Finance has offered to pass it over, and now the selectmen are bringing it up. I just don't, I just would like a clarification. If somebody could explain that to me, I would appreciate it.
All right, we actually have a motion to table this article. If people don't want to table the article, we can go further into the discussion, but it seems that, I'm not sure if there's a handout that is being passed out to give the printed version of this article, of the motion that was read, as we did with Article 4 the other night. If there is, I think the motion to table it makes sense, and then we can come back to it later. I would suggest we vote on whether or not to table it. If the meeting wants to hear it all now, we'll do that now, but I think the appropriate course right now is to take action on the motion, which has priority to table this motion. So, all the explanations can come later. If people want to table this, or if they want to hear it all now, we can not table it. All right, so, does everyone understand? We either can vote to table this and take it up later, when maybe there's a handout, I'm not sure if there is. Ms. King?
I'm sorry to add one more comment to the conversation, but for those that are confused by the Finance Committee recommendation, in this colorful packet, which has their recommendation, if that's one of the reasons that the consideration for some of you for tabling it, or passing it over, or whichever, that last week, I don't, right at the time we broke, we realized that from like 10 on, Articles 10 and 11 on, we had a numbering problem when these were printed. And that's explaining why Article 14 says pass over. It wasn't meant to be 14. If you look at the blue page where it says all the recommendations, if you just shift it down, that 14 should say recommend, if you read the verbiage that they mention, I know it's confusing, but the verbiage that gives the FinCom recommendations, if you read it, it's referring to a different article. It's either the one up, the one above it, because it says Article 15, this article adopts a capital plan, that's actually the article we're talking about right now. So if you shift everything down, it would be more clear, and I apologize for the printing error, or the typing error, but the FinCom did recommend this article, if you look at it. This is not something they said to pass over.
So does that mean we're actually voting on Article 15?
No, 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 no. This is printed wrong.
I think the clarification would be is that 15 in the report of the FinCom relates to Article 14. Is that correct? Mr. King, please be recognized first. All right, we're going to vote on whether or not to table this motion now. All those in favor of tabling this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, the motion is before you. It is not tabled, this motion on Article 14 is before you. Mr. Shaka?
I'm a little confused. Joe Shaka, Maplewood Drive. I'm a little confused. Up there, it says you're going to transfer money from the ambulance receipts, reserved for appropriation. How does that affect Article 16? Which is also...
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Kreidler.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. It's Mr. Shaka through you. There are a number of dollars in the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation fund, and this is, in this article, is one chunk of money that's being appropriated, and in the next article that you referred to, that's a different article, different purpose, but the same fund. There are sufficient funds to cover both of those articles.
Okay, comments come on the motion.
Steve Spofford, 312 Main Street. Just for clarification, didn't we already vote the money to pay for this article?
Question comes on the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreidler.
Through you to Mr. Spofford. As Andrea said moments ago, in the special town meeting, an appropriation of $200,000 was made from free cash into the capital stabilization fund, so those items on the earlier slide, can you go back one slide? So those items on the earlier slide, can you go back one slide? Those ones that are listed up top for $244,950, those all come from capital stabilization. So there are funds sufficient in capital stabilization to fund that section. The next section is borrowing up to $1,240,000 for the tanker and the station. And then the next slide? Next slide is $56,900 from the ambulance receipts reserved, which is a separate funding source, and then the last of the water articles from the Water System Enhancement Fund. So a portion of this was funded by putting it into the capital stabilization account. Now we're just taking it out to buy these things.
Mr. King.
John King, School Street. We keep spending money, spending money, spending money, and I see on here that we're going to do exterior paint and repair the police station. Well, now that we don't have the guys answering the phone, the dispatchers up there anymore, do we really need such a big building? Would it be possible to move the police back to the town hall like they used to be, and then we could sell that building and save $38,000? Just asking a question.
Comments come on the motion. One thing I would have to observe here is this article is such a combination of... Mr. Rahala.
I think I'm going to Gene Rahala, 57 Barker Hill Road. My question is how are we going to divide this to vote? You can't vote this in one up or down vote unless this is an extraordinarily coordinated effort and we have a floor that is in complete harmony with this.
Mr. Moderator. Good point. Mr. Kreidler. Hold on, folks. Hold on.
Through you to Mr. Rahala. Given the fact that two of the components would require a two-thirds vote, he's correct that you would need to bifurcate it and have some two-thirds votes or some majority unless the entire article is moved, seconded, and voted by at least a two-thirds vote, then you can do it in one bite.
Well, I'm trying to get the pleasure of the meeting here because there may be different parts of this that people support and different parts they don't support. Is there a motion to take up the, as I see it, there are three sections. There's transferring from capital stabilization, there is borrowing, and there is, well, four. Transfer from ambulance receipts and then transfer from the Water Enterprise. So I think similar to the budget, we could take these up in separate motions within this article. So is there a motion to do that, I guess? Mr. Rahala.
Gene Rahala, 57 Barker Hill Road. I move that we divide the article into four separate votes, both for discussion purposes and for the vote.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to divide the article into four separate votes. Is there anything to be said about that particular approach? Mrs. Gurkin. Hold on a moment.
Susan Gurkin, Main Street, West Townsend. Can this be rewritten into separate articles? Will Boston accept this? Will the Attorney General accept it if we separate it?
I believe we can within the meeting if the meeting approves doing so. This is not the type of review by the Attorney General that would normally take the scrutiny such as it would be a zoning bylaw change, but... Ms. Smart?
This is how the capital planning article is done every year, and it is a two-thirds vote because the majority of the time it is a transfer out of capital stabilization. There's also, you know, ambulance receipts. It's done like this every year. I think people have forgotten, maybe from last year, how the process has worked for the last six years, but basically what capital planning does is each department submits their requests. It's put onto a five-year plan, and when, you know, they meet with each department and figure out what can be approved and what we can afford, it goes onto an inclusive article. It just has different funding sources. However, we can discuss, and I think we should, the different projects that are on here. In particular, there is an authorization to borrow up to $2 million for a few fire department articles, and I know the Fire Chief would probably like to have a chance to talk about those.
All right. The motion before us is to divide this article into four separate motions, which I believe would just take a majority vote. So ma'am, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if we could hear from the Water Department Superintendent on maybe on should we separate these out or keep them as one before we vote?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you all of what you said.
Hear from the Water Superintendent about whether these should be separated out for the water ones.
Well, it comes on the motion to divide, but I think... Mr. Rayfus, do you want to address that? Does it make a difference? All right. Mr. Rayfus? Voice down here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, it makes no difference to me that the account that it's going to come out of is going to be, the account it's going to come out of, whether it's in this motion or whether it's, those projects aren't considered in this motion, we could still fund the projects. So it's up to the floor how they want to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rayfus. I think we're ready to vote on this. Yes, Mrs. Coit. Can you get the microphone, please?
I'm talking about putting it in four pieces, but I have five things. How is the floor to be divided?
I only see four separate sections. There is a transfer from capital stabilization. There is to borrow regarding the Fire Department. And part of that is meeting that appropriation is to borrow up to $12 million, $40,000, to transfer from ambulance receipts and to transfer from Water Enterprise system. Mrs. Smart?
I think where Shirley receives the five is the amount from tax levy. How our law is written, is anything over $10,000 that has a five-year shelf life has to be put onto the capital plan, which is what you're looking at here. So even though the cruiser was funded through the budget, it's already been raised and appropriated, it still exists on the capital plan, but it doesn't need a funding source. It's already been approved.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready to vote on whether we're going to divide the question or take it all in one fell swoop. So does everyone understand what we're voting on? Okay. All those in favor of dividing the question into four separate motions and debating and voting on each one separately, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
All right. We may have to try that one more time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. All right. We'll take up, the first section is transfer from capital stabilization. The motion is already before you, so are there any questions about this section of Article 14? And maybe we don't have to pause to get handouts because it's on the screen before us, so everybody can see the screen? And is there any further elaboration the selectmen or Finance would make or the department heads make about this article? Doesn't appear, no, there are some questions. Mr. King.
Truck with a plow, truck-mounted ground spreader, control roadside repairs, body armor and exterior paint, and repair of the police station. Is that right?
That's correct.
And we're going to pay for that out of the capital stabilization fund. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
Yep. That's correct.
And it has to be everything up or down?
Right.
And...
Unless there's a motion to do something differently with it.
Like to sell the police station?
All right. Comments come on the motion. Anything else to be said? Miss... Get the mic and... Kelly. All right, Kelly.
I just had a question. I noticed that the Police Department, the exterior paint is listed as $35,000, but on the capital projects, it's listed as $80,000. So I was just wondering why the discrepancy and if we're eventually going to need $45,000 somewhere else to finish off the job.
Question comes on the motion. You want Ms. Smart?
The Police Chief's original request was $80,000 to paint both the inside, the interior and the exterior of the Police Department. Part of our job is to look at each project to see what we can afford. We transferred $200,000 into capital stabilization, so we're already $44,000 over that. We did have some money left in there. So what the Capital Planning Committee felt was that they give them enough money to do the exterior, transfer the additional amount over to next year, and hopefully there'll be enough money to do the interior.
Comments come on the motion. Anything else to be said? Appears we are ready to vote. So the vote is on whether or not to approve the transfer from capital stabilization. The sum's noted for a total of $244,950. All those in favor of that part of the motion on Article 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. I think it's unanimous. Next section is to borrow for the Fire EMS, replacing the tanker number one, $490,000, and Fire EMS, the West Townsend Station Construction Supplemental, $750,000. Is there anything to be said? Mr. Shaka.
Joe Shaka, Maplewood Drive. Has this money already, have we already voted to go into debt for this, or is this going to allow us to go into debt, borrow the money for this?
Okay. Question comes on the motion. Anyone have any... Oh, I think if I can rephrase it, you're asking whether or not we're going to have to borrow for this money? I neglected to point out that part of this motion is also, to meet this appropriation, the treasure with approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow up to $1,240,000 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8. Ms. Moderator. Mr. Kreidler.
Through you to Mr. Shaka's question. This is to borrow to go additional, to take on additional debt, but within the operating budget, so not as a Prop 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion. So this would be something that would be absorbed in the budget next year.
So everybody, Ms. Wright.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kreidler. I didn't hear the last part of that.
Mr. Moderator through you.
You go ahead, Mr. Kreidler.
The last part of that is that this would be incurring additional debt, but not in the form of a debt exclusion. It would be absorbed within the existing operating budget under Prop 2 and 1/2's limit for next year. So when the borrowing takes place, the first payments would be next year, and they would be covered in next year's budget.
If I could, I'd be happy to explain both the articles since they are for Fire EMS. The tanker that we currently have is a 1986. It's 31 years old. It was actually in an accident many, many years ago in total. The truck was actually in an accident many, many years ago and was found totaled, and our insurance money didn't have enough money to replace the truck at the time, so it was repaired and put back in service. So we now have a, or still have, are using a 30-year-old truck to haul water to fires that really has a salvage sticker on it. It has no value to trade in or anything. So the 490 is to replace that. That seems like a lot of money for a tanker, because it is. We're also short a fire engine. We typically have four fire engines. When I took over as chief here three years ago, we had a 1986 engine that failed pump test and needed enough repairs that it wasn't worth fixing it. We sold it at auction for $1,700. So we're down one truck. We do not have a reserve truck. If any one of our engines in any of the stations go out of service, there is no truck to replace that, and that station doesn't have an engine in it. So this tanker will be a combination pumper tanker. That's why it's a little more expensive than just a straight tanker, which would typically run around $375,000 to $400,000. The 490 is because we're getting two trucks for the price of one. It is one truck that does, both hauls water and has all the hoes and ladders and pump and so forth, so it can also serve as a reserve pumper. So two birds with one stone, being fiscally responsible to save you guys money. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'll move on to the West Townsend Fire Station project. As you may recall, two years ago, you approved $1.2 million for us to purchase the Legion building, to do asbestos abatement and to remove that building, to make room to replace the West Townsend Fire Station. $200,000 of that was to do the Legion asbestos and tear the building down and to purchase it, and the $1 million was to buy a fire station or to have a fire station built. The committee, I'm speaking on behalf of the committee, many of the members are here tonight. We were hopeful that we could do it for $1 million. We proposed it as a design-build project, meaning we wouldn't have to pay architectural fees. We would put it out to bid, have people give us designs. We would pick one that we liked, and we would put the station up hopefully for $1 million or less. To our surprise, we found out after starting that process, which we did in 2001 when we built the Harbor Station, that is no longer within the laws in the Mass General and the Commonwealth. You cannot do a design-build unless it's a road project over $5 million. So we were forced to follow the traditional process of hiring an architect, which cost us $115,000, to design a station, engineering and architectural fees and permitting, leaving us $825,000 to build the station. We put it out to bid. The bids came back at one point between $1.4 and $1.8 million. So therefore, we are here before you, or I am here before you tonight, speaking on behalf of the Fire Station Committee, asking for an additional $750,000. We will then put the project out to bid again. We are hopeful and somewhat confident that the project will come in at a similar price that it did last time, and we will now have sufficient money to actually build the fire station. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Comments come on the motion. Are there any other questions? Mr. Spofford.
I just have a question, Mark. We're not going to pull a Ashby and pay for the truck before we get it, right?
No one in the balcony. Appears we're ready to vote. Okay. All those in favor of the portion of Article 14 to borrow for Fire EMS, replace tanker and Fire EMS, the West Townsend Station Construction Supplemental, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. And that also required a two-thirds vote in any event, right, Mr. Riley? So unanimous, we don't have to count. To transfer from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation is the next part of Article 14. And the motion, is there anything to be said on this? Doesn't appear to be any. I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the transferring from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, sum of $56,900, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. And lastly, to transfer from water... And lastly, to transfer from Water Enterprise System Enhancement Account, and we have it up on the screen, a total of $270,000. Is there anything to be said? Here's none, no questions? All right, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of this section of Article 14, to transfer from Water Enterprise System Enhancement Account, the sum of $270,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. That brings us to Article 15, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the Finance Committee's report, would appear as Article 16? Okay, Article 16 in the Finance Committee Report, because there was a problem with numeris, enumeration, I guess. All right, I moved to tran, no, I'm sorry, that's the motion. Getting ahead of myself here. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the Treasury, is some to be inserted for the purpose of paying off debt, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Ms. Lizzio?
I move to transfer from free cash, the sum of $100,000, for the purpose of paying off debt.
There's motion been made and seconded. Anything to be said? Here's, oh, no, Mr. Sheldon.
Steve Sheldon, 18 Orchard Drive. What debt?
Question comes on the motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Lizzio?
Could we ask Mr. Kreidler?
Yep, Mr. Kreidler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to Mr. Sheldon's question. Several years ago, the town did a borrowing authorization of $600,000 for a number of different things, the majority of which didn't have a life expectancy of over five years. So the way it's been explained to me is that there's been paydowns on this debt as standalone special articles like this over the past three years. There was a $50,000 payment the first year, $100,000 last year, and $100 this year. Ms. Lizzio and I had a conversation earlier today about the fact that it was a very low interest rate when this money was borrowed. So the thinking, as I understand it now, was that it's better to put someone else's money to work if the interest rate is low enough, which is why it was, it was bundled this way and the borrowing was done. If we didn't pay this off, it'd be roughly four grand in interest that we'd pay this year, which was something that Ms. Lizzio and I talked about today, about having a discussion on the floor tonight about. I did then speak with the Treasurer Collector who was here, I don't know that she still is. She just went downstairs for a moment, but she'll be back. And she did indicate to me today that she spoke with our financial advisor, who advised that because this doesn't, the majority of this doesn't have a life expectancy of over five years, we must pay this down. So it's been presented to me by the Treasurer Collector that we have no obligate, no opportunity to do anything other than continue to make these annual payments.
Comments come on the motion. Anything further to be said? Appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, the sum to be inserted for the purpose, for the purpose of paying the second installment for the completely outfitted and equipped ambulance for the fire EMS department, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Clark?
I move to transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account the sum of $67,870, for the purpose of paying the second installment on the completely outfitted and equipped ambulance for the fire EMS department.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anything to be said? Appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the Treasury, the sum of $175,000, for the purpose of funding equipment, upgrades and repairs to the town's public safety communications infrastructure system, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash, the sum of $175,000, for the purpose of funding equipment upgrades and repairs to the town's public safety communications infrastructures, infrastructure system.
Motion's made and seconded on Article 17. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Coit?
How does this match with the fact that we're now over at Devon's? I thought the equipment was over there now.
Okay, question comes on the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreidler.
Thank you, through you to Ms. Coit. When the Chiefs both made their recommendations back in November to transfer to Devon's, the recommendation included the, the request that the total budget for communications continue to be appropriated for three to five years off into the future, and that the residual after paying the assessment fee for Nishoba be kept for doing capital infrastructure upgrades here in town. So I know that Chief Boynton had taken the lead on this, he's here if there are more technical questions about it, but this is the follow-up to that request by both Chiefs to make sure that that money stays on the table for communications upgrades.
Comments come on the motion. Was there a hand over here? Right, Heidi, Ms. Messing.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heidi Messing, Proctor Road. Can the Chief just tell us a little bit, what are we buying for $175,000?
Mr. Kreidler's correct. The recommendation was to go to Nishoba. However, Nishoba does dispatch for us, they answer our phones, they speak to us over the radio, they take all of our 911 calls, but they still talk to us over our radio system, our towers here in town, one on Bayberry Hill, or Lunenburg Road, and one down at the Rod and Gut Club. We've, part of that decision to go to Nishoba is because we have some failing infrastructure. Our radios have failed several times over the last couple of years, our phones have failed, our computers have failed. We're currently in failure on one of our tower sites. There are what's called microwave links that communicate between the two towers. That microwave link has failed, it needs to be replaced for $27,000. So that $175,000 is to rebuild those tower sites. And it'll take several years, as we made the recommendation back in November, it'll take several years, three to five years, to rebuild all of the infrastructure to get it where we need it to be, to last us the next 15 to 20 years. So that's the, the $175, more specifically, would replace the radios for both police and fire at both of our tower sites, the microwave link, and all the labor and, and charges involved with that, people climbing the towers, putting the microwaves up, putting the antennas up, and all that stuff.
Comments come on the, question on the motion. Anything further to be said? Appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 17, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. And I would, it appears to me to be more than 2/3, but I, I'm not, doesn't necessarily anyways, right? Majority vote, okay. All right, Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise from Water Enterprise Retained Earnings, the sum to be inserted for the purpose of funding the complete restoration of the Fitchburg Road Water Storage Tank, and for all other costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise Retained Earnings, the sum of $469,000, for the purpose of funding the complete restoration of the Fitchburg Road Water Storage Tank, and for all other costs incidental and relation, and related thereto.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, but I'm going to address, no one has raised this point, but it had been raised to me in between meetings, as to whether or not, and Mr. Rafe Hughes is not a resident of the town right now, but was for many years, whether or not a non-resident can make a motion. And I want to address this now, so we don't have questions later on. Certainly, a department head can, by our bylaws, has a right to speak on any article before the meeting, but I want to be clear, and I don't know, Brian, if you could comment, if there is any concern here as far as Mr. Rafe Hughes making the motion?
I think, as you say, it's certainly appropriate for him to speak on it, but just perhaps for, for form, if nothing else, it might be better if one of the water commissioners read the motion.
Okay, to be on the safe side, Paul, could you have one of your commissioners make
Nathan Madala, Oak Street. Oh, hold on one second. I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise Retained Earnings, the sum of $469,000, for the purpose of funding the complete restoration of the Fitchburg Road Water Storage Tank, and for all other costs incidental and related thereto.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Anything to be said?
Bill? Bill Ains.
Ains.
Pine Ridge Apartments on Fitchburg Road. Would, I have a question for the water, either one of the two, either one of the two gentlemen, either one of the two gentlemen that just spoke, where on Fitchburg Road is the Fitchburg Road Water Storage Tank?
Okay, question comes on the motion, Mr. Rafe Hughes?
Well, it's kind of hard to, it's unusual you can't see it because it's a half a million doll, half a million gallon storage tank, but I don't know if you're familiar with the old Uncle Willys or across from Emery Road. It's right in back of 105 Fitchburg Road, simply put.
Paul, you're dating yourself with Uncle Willys. All right, motion's been made and seconded and discussed, is there anything further to be said? Appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the Treasury, the sum to be inserted for the purpose of funding road improvements, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Lizzio?
I move to pass over this article.
The, the motion is to pass over? Okay. All right, motion's been made to pass over this article. Is there anything to be said?
Does, does this need a second? I'll second it. Question I have is why? I mean, I live in Timberly Park, the roads haven't been paved in 40 years.
Question comes on why the article is being passed over. Mr. Kreidler?
Mr. Moderator, through you to Mr. Shaka. The, the $100,000 contemplated in this article was actually already voted in the capital plan, so there was $100,000 for road repairs covered there.
Okay, comments come on the motion. I'm sorry.
Margaret Genotar, 83 Maplewood Drive. How far is $100,000 going to get us?
Mr. Moderator? Question comes on the motion. Mr. Kukula, Department Head, Highway Department Head?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know I've spoken about this at numerous town meetings, and, thank you, Steve. $100,000, if we mill and resurface, will get us about 3/4 of a mile of a road. I plan on doing, we had some money left over from last year, and I plan on doing Proctor Road and a section of Mason Road, which is approximately 1.7 miles, and that cost is going to be about $300,000. I have 12 ro, ma, major roads in town that need either milling and resurfacing or complete reconstruction, and the cost to do those 14 roads is approximately $3.2 million. The state gives us Chapter 90 funding in the area of $420,000 a year. I've been here where years it's only been about $120,000. It all depends on how the state feels about how much they want to give us every year. And if you do the numbers, you know, $420,000 into $3.2 million is about eight years. But as we're doing those roads, that leaves us with no money to do anything else, whether it's to maintain the roads, crack seal the roads, fix basins. There comes a point where we just can't keep going like this, as Mr. Shaka stated. You know, Timberly Park has never been touched. Ash Street is on the list of the 14 roads. Unfortunately, there isn't any other roads in that development that are on that list as of this time. I live in Lunenburg, and last year, the superintendent there put an override in for $5 million, and it did pass. And I was happy to see it because I understand where they're at. And at some point, I feel, feel like we're going to have to do that if we want to at least catch up. Might not get ahead, but we're going to need to catch up. It's just my opinion, but you know, something's going to have to be done other than what we're doing right now.
Mrs. Genotar?
What would you recommend this body do then to fix this problem? I will tell you that my current commute is down Cross Road, up Highland Street, down Spalding, and in through Timberly Park. I'm pretty surprised I haven't lost a tire yet, to be quite honest with you. We're here as a body, I think we're all affected by this. Can we do something about this? This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion, and I have to applaud Mrs. Genotar for taking, taking a stand as Mrs. Madala might have done, if she were with us tonight. But comments, Ms. Lizzio from the Selectmen, obviously this has to do with finances, so...
It's, I mean, I totally agree with, with Ms. Genotar, and probably a bunch of the rest of you. But I think what we've been trying to do is do things piecemeal, a little bit at a time. I think as Lunenburg did, it might be coming time for that. I'm hoping that this board will be able to, to talk that through and figure out a plan, maybe with some members of the community volunteering to, to look at it and to problem solve around it. That's my hope, because I, I think we have gotten to the point where we just can't ignore it anymore. That's just my opinion.
Okay, comments come on the motion. Ms. Messing and then Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Help me remember, I think last year, there was an article like this, and we were, it was tabled, and we were not even allowed to appropriate any money for roads. Am I remembering that correctly? Or maybe it was a year before, but there was one year we got, I think we were not, we just decided not to even vote any money for roads.
Comments come on the motion. Mr. King?
We all know that New England is tough on roads, and we all know that it's tough on equipment, and I think that the Highway Department does a pretty good job to protect us, and they're doing the best they can with the money that they have. And maybe he's right, at some point, we're going to have to do an override to get caught up. But I do think that they're doing the best they can, and we should probably give him a hand.
Okay, folks, all right, Mrs. Smart?
So you're right, every year, we try and do a warrant article from anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000, depending on what we have available for free cash. If you notice in your capital plan that you just approved, we took it from capital stabilization versus putting it in an ATM article.
Comments come on the motion, which is to appropriate, I'm sorry, in the back. Comments come on the motion, which is to appropriate, I'm sorry, in the back.
Patty O'Driscoll, Walnut Street. I just have a question. I'm looking at the revenue generated by excise tax, and it's $1.2 million. Can you tell me where that revenue is going? Apparently, it's not going to our streets.
Question comes on the motion. Mr. Kreider?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To Ms. O'Driscoll, through you. The revenue generated by excise tax is one of the regular revenues that comes into the general government budget to fund the entirety of the budget. So your point is, is a good one. If the town meeting wanted, through the budget process next year, to say, we want to carve off a different chunk of that money to go toward roadway work, that could be something to consider, keeping in mind that that would mean something less being funded elsewhere that's currently being supported by that money.
Comments come on the motion. Anything else to be said? I believe, Mr. Sawyer?
Dave Sawyer, Brookline Street. I may have not heard it correctly, but how much is the state paying the Town of Towns and to fix our highways? You know, a number amount, and they don't seem to have any problems in getting themselves big fat raises, and all the money seems to go over there, but we're going to get any of their money to fix our roads? Because my street, Cross Street, is a disaster. They patch it, and then six months later, it's gone to part again. No pun intended. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Comments come on the motion. Mr. Kreider?
To the gentleman's question, through you, as Mr. Kukula said moments ago, we get roughly $420,000 from the state each year for roadway work. It's through a program called Chapter 90. And back to Ms. O'Driscoll's point, the state, when it imposed the gas tax, the deal was they're going to put a gas tax in, and that money's going to come back for roadway work. Over the course of time, less and less has come back. The gas tax exists and increases. More revenue is generated, but less and less comes back to the towns and cities.
Mr. Moderator, Ray Jackson, 14 Blood Road. I agree with everything to give Mr. Kukula more money for the roads, and I understand that we're voting to pass it over because the money's already there. How much is money is going to go to Mr. Kukula while we pass this over? That's all I just want to, I'm getting mixed up here.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreider?
Mr. Kukula will have, all things considered, that the state upholds what it has done over the last couple of years, $420,000 from the state and $100,000 from local taxpayers, so $520,000. And he had some residual, and I don't remember how much he had left over from last, and he had $300,000 still on account from last year, so he'll have 820.
I think we have fairly well discussed this motion to pass over. One last question, perhaps?
Yeah. Wayne Freitag, Joyce Street. Who pays for the maintenance on Route 13?
Question comes on the motion. Yeah, Ed, if you could.
I'm not sure of the date, but the, the state actually, I think, pretty much told the Town of Towns in that they had to take over Route 13. They do not give us any funding for that road, so it is, it is maintained by us, unfortunately, because it adds another six miles to our, our maintenance for our roads.
Comments come on the motion and the question. Ma'am, in the back, and the scouts are doing yeoman service because I think they normally would have to go to a meeting, but if you guys have to leave, let us know, but if you can hang on for a bit. Go ahead, ma'am.
Becky Zagami, Edward Road. I just have a question, clarification. You said we're supposed to get $420,000 for Chapter 90, but I thought you said we are not getting that. We're only getting about 120. Did I hear that correctly?
Question comes on the motion.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
You go ahead, Mr. Kreider.
Thank you. No, we should be getting, if the state holds true to what it has been doing over the last several years, we should get 420 from the state. We have $100,000 that we just put in from the capital plan, bringing it to 520, and he has 300 left over from last year, bringing us to 820. No, we, he said it's gone as low as 100,000 in his experience, but over the past several years, it's been hovering around the 4 to 420, and we expect 420 this year.
Comments come on the motion. Anything further to be said? This is a motion to pass over.
So it sounds like a lot of people would like to put more money toward roads. If we wanted to do that and did a motion, how would we fund it? I mean, I know it's not in the budget. Would we raise and appropriate? Would we transfer? How would that even work?
Well, right now, the motion is to pass over, but Mr. Kreider, if you want to address that.
Certainly. Through you, to Ms. Messing's question. Currently, after passing the budget, there is, under the limit of our abilities with Prop 2 and 1/2, there's roughly $25,000 of additional revenue that we can raise, and by agreement of the members of the select board, that's being held against potential contracts for two collective bargaining groups in public safety that are outstanding. So there is no room to raise and appropriate. There is, however, at the end of all of the articles that have passed so far, there is a balance of $97,538.64 in free cash. So I guess the mechanics of that, if that were the wish of the body, would be to vote down the motion to pass over and then have a motion to appropriate $97,538.64. The question becomes at that point, if you're going to go, you know, a quarter of a mile with that, is the value to the community greater in that quarter mile or having the roughly $100,000 on hand for emergencies throughout the rest of the fiscal year?
I think Mr. Kreider puts it correctly. If people wanted to appropriate that small amount of free cash left in the budget, you would have to vote down the motion to take no action, and then the motion would be before you for an amount to be inserted. Mr. Biswanger?
Move the question.
All right. Motion's been made to move the question. We'll cut off debate. We could do that, but are we ready to vote anyway? There's no more questions. I think we can move, moving the question and go right to the vote. All right? All those in favor of passing, rather, taking no action on Article 19, or, I'm sorry, it's pass over. I'm sorry, I'm so used to taking no action on these. Motion has been made to pass over Article 19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 20, that the town votes to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 69B, which would give the Board of Water Commissioners exclusive charge and control of the Water Department, subject to all lawful bylaws and to such instructions, rules, and regulations as the town may, from time to time, impose by its vote, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Madala. I think the scouts may have left. Steve, we could, we got volunteer for the mic?
Mr. Moderator. Nathan Madala, 5 Oak Street. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 69B, which would give the Board of Water Commissioners exclusive charge and control of Water Department, subject to all lawful bylaws and to such instructions, rules, regulations, as the town may, from time to time, impose by its vote.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article 20. Anything to be said? Mr. Malanson?
Surprise. I just wanted to clarify a few things, and some of this stuff is going to come straight from the DEP's webpage. DEP criteria for water systems and the need and requirement for non-political independent bodies requires this passage.
Speak close to the mic, Todd, if you would.
The DEP requirements for water systems need for a non-political independent body, and I'm going to read straight from their page. Mass. DEP under Chapter 111, Section 160, and the Drinking Water Regulation, CMR 22-00, has directs, conveys their direct authority to regulate public water supplies in the Commonwealth to the, directly to independently elected Boards of Water Commissioners, such that this, make them the sole governing municipal body with response, with the responsibility for ensuring a water system has all the required managerial and financial resources to comply with the CMR 22. It is backed up by Mass. General Law, Section, Chapter 40.
Todd, hold on, we've got a point of order, but, uh, well, let's hear what your point of order is. Wait a minute, wait for Mike.
With all due respect to Mr. Malanson, I have an, our attorney here, he's a visitor. I'd like to defer to him initially to explain our position.
All right. Mr. Malanson?
I'll defer.
Yield?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Sir, could you, all right, so, Mr., I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name is Steve Dusset.
All right. Mr. Dusset, I just want to make sure, does everyone agree to hear from Mr. Dusset on this point?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Dusset.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know you've had a long couple of nights. I was here on last Tuesday as well. I'm an attorney, and I've been practicing for about 35 years, 30 of which have been in the utility industry. I represent multiple water departments and districts throughout the state, and I was hired by the Water Department initially to come in and give them an evaluation of your current situation. There was, according to the reports I received, there was issues that were being passed by the Water Commissioners that were either being altered or dismissed by the Board of Selectmen or the Town Administrator, and they came to me and asked me my legal opinion as to whether or not that was appropriate. Just to give you some history of your town, in 1920, there was a piece of legislation that enabled the Town of Towns to create the Water Department. The Water Department, the townsfolk then in 1933 voted to accept that, and they had a choice back in 1933 as to who would run the Water Department. It had an option between the Board of Selectmen or the Water Commissioners, and they elected to have a Board of Water Commissioners. And the statute very specifically says that the Water Commissioners would then have the charge of taking care of the Water Department. Recently, that has changed, and they approached me, and there was basically two options that were available to the Water Department at this point. The first one was to have me go to court and file what is called a declaratory judgment action, which would be a lawsuit between the Water Department, in essence, and the Board of Selectmen for the town. The only people who benefit would be the attorneys, because you would be paying for one set of legal fees to the Water Department and one set of legal fees through the town. The second option that I proposed to them is the option that we're voting on tonight. I said it would be much less expensive if you voted on the Section 69B, which the language is very clear, the Water, the Board of Commissioners then would have exclusive control over the Water Department. I represent several systems, and that's how they operate, and once that goes through, the Water Department is an independent agency, subject to what the townspeople want the Water Department to do. Just to let you know, the Water Department just can't do whatever it wants to do. You elect the Commissioners, and then if you want the Water Department to do something in particular, you have the right to make and pass by town vote instructions for the Water Department. So that is what the Water Department has asked me to come forward and explain to you. That is the purpose of this particular vote, so that the Board of Water Commissioners would have the authority to do that, and then to operate the town, the Water Department independently as an enterprise fund, and they would be able to do so consistent with their fiduciary obligations to do so in the best interests of the town.
Comments come on the motion. Anything, any other questions, comments? Steve, do you see one? Oh, okay.
Hi, Karen Hill, Pierce Road. Why is it the Selectmen felt they had to step in and do some of this, take over part of the Water Department, or why, why are we even discussing this, I guess?
Question comes on the motion. Mr. Kreider?
I'll, I'll step into this water.
Don't go too deep.
Thanks. I'm already over my head. With all due respect, thank you. With all due respect to counsel for the, I guess, the Water Department, although I'm not quite certain that there's the ability to have done that, but that's a separate issue. I've yet, I've yet to hear what the specific issues are that the Commissioners believe or allege that the select board has interfered with in terms of their operations. If you look at even the express language of the local option statute that you're putting before the body this evening, it says, "subject to other rules, regulations, bylaws that are imposed by the voters." We currently have a charter that speaks to this issue. We currently have personnel policies and procedures signed by the Water Commissioners that speak to this issue. We have an enterprise fund that this body voted in terms of how the budget is to be handled, which speaks to this issue. So the Board of Selectmen, at least in my year plus, year and a half that I've been here, I've seen them functioning within the confines and the four corners of what town meeting has authorized them to do. So if there are some specific issues that the Water Commissioners have, they've not articulated them, to my knowledge, to either myself or the Board of Selectmen, in an effort at addressing them and having a dialogue. So I guess I'm surprised. So when Ms. Hill asks the question, what are the issues, or where has there been this overreach, I can't answer that because I've not been advised as to where that overreach is alleged to have occurred.
Comments come on the motion. Mr. Malanson?
Town meeting has approved an additional position for the Water Department, two consecutive town meetings. It has not been filled by the Board of Selectmen. Additionally, you did not let a representative, a well-respected water professional.
Mr. Malanson? Kindly keep your comments to a proper tone, please.
You did not let a respected member of the water community, through New England and Massachusetts, to explain the inaccuracies, misconceptions in that report that you accepted. You didn't even read the report. Whether he was there or not, at your invitation, he is a respected member of Mass. Waterworks, New England Waterworks.
Mr. Malanson? Mr. Malanson, if you continue to raise your tone of voice, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Yes, sir.
Kindly keep your comments measured and restrained.
That is how the Board of Selectmen have interfered in the operation of the Water Department in the enterprise fund. Mass. DEP specifically says, "The Board of Water Commissioners are the sole authority, municipal authority, in the operation of the Water Department." Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, to the, to the speaker?
Mr. Kreider?
But through you. In terms of the funding of the positions, Mr. Malanson is correct that the Water Commissioners have submitted a budget that has had a position funded each year, and it has passed. The fact that the legislative body funds a position is only one part of the equation. What the executive then chooses to do with that funding is an entirely different process, and that brings me back to the Policies and Procedures Manual that in 2004, the Board of Water Commissioners, as one of only a number of elected bodies, signed off on. So whether that position is filled or not then falls to those policies, and the Board of Selectmen have as their authority, without overstepping any boundaries, by those policies to decide whether to fill it or not. So Mr. Malanson is incorrect. Additionally, the comment that we've also heard now repeatedly about the well-respected member of the water community, he may be the most respected, not only in our area, but nationally or internationally. The fact is, that's not. The fact is, that's not the Board overstepping their boundaries, that's a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, that is not a public hearing where they are accepting a report, somebody unannounced expected to be able to speak, within their purview under the law, they decided that they weren't going to have that comment. Again, they have not overstepped their bounds in any of these matters.
Comments come on the motion. Ms. Lewin?
When you ordered the latest audit on the water department, did you consult at all with the water commissioners?
Question comes on the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I'm not certain what level of understanding Ms. Lewin has of the red flag program in the town of Townsend, but just by way of background, the town adopted a program about two years ago that if somebody believes that there is an action that has occurred, or is occurring, that represents concern, either financial or policy, a complaint can be submitted anonymously. And if there is a complaint that alleges that there may be activity that's occurring that is of financial concern, an audit would be the proper course of action. The requirement under the policy is that the town administrator and the town accountant are to address the issue if and when it's raised. When an issue gets raised, I will speak in hypotheticals to not, not speak specifically about an investigation. If an article, if a complaint comes in that there is a concern about inventory control in the department, I have an obligation to see that that is responded to. If, in fact, the question in that complaint implies that there may be wrongdoing, it would be inappropriate at that point to walk into the office of the person to whom the complaint is being made against and say, "Hey, we've got to come in and take a look at this." So instead, an audit by a CPA, who, again, so much confusion about the fact that this auditing firm is not a water auditing firm. This wasn't about water, this was about inventory control, whether you're talking about highway department, salt, sand, and nuts and bolts, or whether you're talking about the fire department, you know, whether you're talking about the fire department or ambulance in terms of their medical supplies, this is inventory control. So the audit was a necessity based on the policy adopted by the Board two years ago.
Okay, comments come on the motion. I think Ms. Kelly.
I just had a question for Mr. Kreidler, if that's okay? I don't know if he remembers a phone conversation in February 2015 between you and I, where you mentioned to me that you were going to reopen the investigation into the water department, because you did not feel that the previous investigation was thorough enough, and-
I think that goes a little bit beyond the question before the meeting. Mr. Ray Hughes?
We can't hear your mic.
Hold on.
I believe Ms. Kelly is pointing to the fact how the current administration is interfering with the operation of the water department and the Board of Water Commissioners. I almost, I will add at this point, this makes the third year, approximately two years, we've had my Board of Water Commissioners have approved the hiring of additional water tech. It's gone to the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen for approval, it's been approved at town meeting, the voting body, the town yourselves has voted this person, and we have yet to be allowed to hire this person. Another instance is back in 2005, the Board of Water Commissioners voted to restructure OnCall, the operation of OnCall. Every water department, every water supplier in the state does this. The structure was changed to include myself in the OnCall rotation. OnCall rotation consists of a full week, you have to be available 24/7 to be there, and it was voted that I would get compensated at the same rate as the water techs, and the Board of Selectmen have overturned that and said my Board of Water Commissioners had no authority to do that. They were, they had no authority to appropriate those funds. Those funds are the water takers' funds. You voted a Board of Water Commissioners back in 1933, you vote them every year on a rotating basis to operate the water department, to oversee the water department, and that's what they're trying to do. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion. Ms. Lewin?
Hang on. I vote, may we move the question?
Motion's been made to move the question, that will cut off debate. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is before you, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 69B, which would give the Board of Water Commissioners exclusive charge and control of the water department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J, Disability Commission, powers and duties, members, terms, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J, Disability Commission, powers and duties, members and terms.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there anything to be said on Article 21, and any explanation from the proponents from the selectmen? Ms. King?
Mr. Moderator, the Commissions on Disability is an opportunity for towns to establish, and some of our neighbor towns, including Groton Pepper, will have commissions on disability. But the duty of the commission, it's, can be, at least five members can be on that commission, and their role would be to advise and assist municipal officials in ensuring compliance with federal and state disability laws. And I'm reading right off the website here. Review policies and activities of municipal departments and boards as they affect persons with disabilities. Provide information, referral, advocacy, technical assistance to individuals, businesses, and organizations in all matters pertaining to disability. And coordinate the activities of other local groups organized to meet the needs of persons with disabilities. One of the recommendations is that some of the, or a majority of the members that would be on this commission would be actually people that have disabilities. The committee, or the commission can also get grants to provide some of the information and referral. Some of you might comment that we have an ADA coordinator, who is our building inspector, which, he's doing a fine job doing the job that he does, but the commission is about the people that are to provide information, referral about people with disabilities and make sure information is going on, not just, not just to be a regulatory person to approve or disapprove items regarding construction or access to buildings and whatnot. The Commission on Disability is really a conduit or go-between between the community who have disabilities and both the rest of the community that's trying to provide services, and the governmental boards that might have questions.
All right, comments come on the motion. Mr. Jackson? Up front, thanks.
Ray Jackson, 14 Blood Road. I'm just curious, now, if we were to pass this, does that mean that Townsend is now able to obtain grants and monies that we were not previously allowed to have for things like senior trails and things like that? That would, the wheelchair community and other disabled people would be able to utilize?
Question comes on the motion. Ms. King?
I can't guarantee any particular grant would come in, but you'd have a commission whose focus would be on those exact grants, to be able to be the voice and be able to do the research, and those things that are specifically pertaining to disabled persons and access. So more than, we don't, we have different, we have the Senior Center, we have Council on Aging, we have different, different folks that have interest in that, as well as the committee I'm still trying to fill, I apologize for jumping on this, but the, the strategy committee, but the, this commission would be a voice and have access, also be getting information from the Massachusetts Office on Disability, which is really a strong advocacy group, government group to provide the access to some of that information, so.
Ms. Lazio?
I'm sorry, just because I don't understand too much about it, I haven't been following it as closely. I just have a question. I understand that would be able to, or this commission would be able to apply for grants and hopefully get them. What else, or what might it cost the town in terms of future costs to the town? Either in support staff, or any incidentals, or if they started a project and for some reason, funding dried up? What's our commitment financially, is the only question I have.
Okay, question comes on the motion. Ms. King, do you have? As I understand, this is simply, at this point, setting up a commission that would oversee, I presume it would be staffed by volunteers, and I guess I had a follow-up question, if I might, as far as, is this going to require some future action to determine how many members, what, you know, configuration the committee or commission would have?
Mr. Moderator, to start with your last question, the recommendation is five to 10 members. The Board of Selectmen would then have to take action to actually fill that committee. So, I mean, just here, I would say five, we're a small town, we don't need a huge committee, commission to do that. As far as some of the costs that the commission would incur, they don't necessarily need administrative support, other than asking questions of other boards. As far as projects that would be ongoing, they would be projects from other boards. There would be projects, there would be, an advisory commission, and regulatory commission as far as talking to other, other projects that are going on. Gee, what, identifying projects that might need to be added, but not be necessarily paid for by the commission, but say, hey, you know, there's, some people are having trouble crossing the street, there's a, where there's a curbing, you know, we really need a curb cut there, this might not be required, but it would really be beneficial. That would be something that, if there's a plan already to put a sidewalk in, making sure the curb cuts are where they need to be, not just where they have to be, but where they, it would benefit the disabled population. There's a different thing, I'm trying to be as general as I possibly can, but I don't see, I don't foresee a problem where there would be, oh, now we have to budget something else.
Okay.
That would be costly for the town. If I can read some, some samples from a, I'm going to read a couple of things from a sample operating bylaws that might be, that some, this is just a sample off their website. Article 2 would be powers and duties. Research, understand, evaluate, and advocate local issues, challenges, and opportunities encountered by people with disabilities. Coordinate the activities of other local groups organized to meet the needs of people with disabilities. Review and make recommendations about policies, procedures, services, activities of departments and agencies of the city or town as they affect people with disabilities. Work in cooperation with the departments and agencies of the town to bring about maximum participation of people with disabilities. Initiate, monitor, promote legislation of the city, state, and federal level which advances the equal status of people with disabilities. Encourage public awareness of disability issues. I could go on and on, but these are examples, getting into money, just receive gifts of property, both real and personal, and name of the town, subject to the approval of the city council or boards, such gifts to be managed and controlled by the commission.
I think we get the idea.
Yeah, it's, to help the people with disabilities, and even things like making sure, you know, I'm sure that there's people sitting at home right now that because of their disabilities couldn't come to this town meeting. Maybe there's something that could, something that could be done to help people with some disabilities to come here, rather than trying to figure out what's going on.
All right, ma'am up in the back in the center?
Hi, Laura Doyle Meadow Road. I want to reference something the planning board put at the back of tonight's packet. I don't know where it is in the original packet, for folks who have that one. And it's in relation to a different article, but I think it applies here. The first paragraph, it's very short, says Townsend has an aging demographic. In 2010, only 13% of Townsend's population was over 60 years of age. In 2015, 20% were over 60, and the trend continues. By the year 2035, 40% of Townsend's population is expected to be over 60. So looking at that projection, and being in the over 60 category myself, my husband and I are both, I think that anything we do in this area, I think we should pass this, it's not only going to benefit people who are bona fide disabled, but it's going to benefit that elderly population too. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion. Mr. King?
So let's say that they, this committee gets formed, not that we have people on every committee, how many empty positions do we already have on volunteer committees, by the way? Do we know that? Because we don't have enough people filling the positions that we have. So say this committee does get formed, and we have five people to be on it, and as a family member of a disabled person, I fully believe in this, but if this committee wants to review building codes, would they have to pay Mr. Hanks to come to a 7:00 meeting on a Wednesday night?
Questions come on the motion. Not sure if it's a general question nature, so I don't know if anyone has an answer for that particularly, but Ms. King, do you want to take a stab?
Sure. Yes, I know we have a lot of boards and committees that don't have enough members, and we're always looking for more volunteers to do a number of things in town, but I don't see that as a reason not to try to have a commission that, if we don't have the commission, then there's no one that's going to be on it. So having the commission gives us an opportunity for people to volunteer, and maybe it's something new that we get new people to come out and do.
Okay, comments come on the motion. Ms. Lewin?
No, Linda Johansson, thank you.
Oh.
Just a quick question, clarification on like, powers and duties and authorization, authority. If they're working with another, say, capital planning or something, and there was some building project going on, and they're making advisory recommendations, and the other committee says, "No, we're not going to do that, we can't put in that ramp," for example, I'm just hypothetical, who would have that authority? Are they just making advisory recommendations and asking to be considered, or who's the deciding authority?
Question comes on the motion. Ms. King?
I think depending on what the issue would be, whoever, what law would cover in that, that particular question that you're giving, I think that Mr. Hanks would be the authority, as the building inspector, to say certain things can and can't be built. But the commission would have the information on what's required, and I can't imagine that a board would go outside of the law on some of these things anyways, but, and I think the intent would be to do the best we can for the disabled population.
Up in the balcony, Ms. Gabrilzka?
Hi, as a former conservation agent for the Conservation Commission, I was instructed to do the disability portion of the open space and recreation plan, and one of the issues, one of the recommendations was to do this disability commission, and in fact, it was recommended by the study done by the Monitrus Regional Planning Commission back, as far back as 2000, and I think it was 2003, maybe a little later, but they recommended this over, oh, I don't know, 12 years ago? So I think it's a great idea. I don't know about the cost, but it's a great idea.
Comments come on the motion. Ms. Jackson? Motion made, move this question, all, will cut off debate. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. It is before you, Article 21, to establish a disability commission. All those in favor of article, of the motion on Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to replace Section 145, Section 36 with the following new zoning bylaw, or amended zoning bylaw, and it is not all that late, but with the consent of the meeting, I will not read the article, but ask if there's a motion. Any objection to just going straight to reading the motion?
No.
No, no objection, right? Okay. All right, is there a motion? Okay, all right, is there a motion?
Thank you, Lance McNally, Shirley Road. So, someone probably did a better job than I in terms of reading sort of the report on our aging population here in Townsend. But imagine, in 2035, 40% of our population is going to be over 60. As part of the District Local Technical Assistant Grant, the Monarchus Regional Planning Commission assisted the planning board in facilitating a public form...
Mr. McNally, Mr. McNally, I think we need to read the motion first. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I make a motion to see if the town will vote to replace 145-36 with the following bylaw, or take action thereof. Accessory apartments. Purpose, for the purpose of A, providing small additional dwelling units to be occupied, excuse me, without adding to the number of buildings in town or substantially altering the appearance of the town; B, providing alternate housing options; and C, enabling owners of single-family dwellings larger than required for their present needs to share space and the burden of home ownership. Procedures. Number one, accessory apartments may be allowed in residential A and B, downtown commercial, neighborhood commercial, outlined commercial districts by right, if the lot is more than two acres. Accessory apartments may be allowed in residential A and B, downtown commercial, neighborhood commercial, outlined commercial districts on lots less than two acres by special permit 145-65. All accessory apartments shall adhere to the following conditions. A, a plot plan of the existing dwelling unit and proposed accessory apartment shall be submitted to the building inspector and the Board of Health showing the location of the building on the lot and the proposed accessory apartment, location of any septic system and required parking. B, the property in which the accessory apartment is located shall be owned under a single deed. C, the owner of the premises must occupy one of the units except for temporary absences. D, not more than one accessory apartment shall be established on a lot and must be attached or within the primary dwelling. E, the footprint of the structure in which the accessory apartment is to be located shall not be increased by more than 800 square feet and shall retain the appearance of a single-family structure. The primary dwelling and the accessory apartments shall each be an independent living unit, each containing a kitchen and a bath and a minimum of one-bedroom or one-bedroom living area. And any such increase, any such increase in the footprint shall not exacerbate an existing nonconformity, nor create a new nonconformity, and shall still meet the dimensional requirements of a single-family home. Sufficient and appropriate area for at least one additional parking space shall be provided by the owner to serve the accessory apartment. Said parking shall be constructed of materials consistent with the existing driveway and to prevent on-street parking. Shall have vehicular access to the driveway, all as set forth in, you know, 145-24. G, no occupancy permit shall be granted without the accessory apartment conformance to the provisions of Title V of the State Sanitary Code 310 CMR 15 and applicable regulations of the Townsend Board of Health. H, any accessory apartment intended for occupancy by a person with a disability shall be subject to provisions of MGLC 40A 3. Four, accessory apartments shall be permitted within existing outbuildings with the following provisions met. A, the lot is at least two acres in size. B, the external appearance of the structure in which the accessory apartment is to be located shall not be significantly altered from the appearance, from the experience of the existing structure. C, the footprint of the structure in which the accessory apartment is to be located shall not be increased. D, the accessory unit shall not exceed 800 square feet. The primary dwelling and the accessory apartment shall each be an independent living unit, each containing a kitchen and a bath and a minimum of one-bedroom or bedroom living area. E, a plot plan of the existing dwelling and proposed accessory apartment shall be submitted to the building inspector and the Board of Health showing the location of the building on the lot, the proposed accessory apartment, location of any septic system and required parking. F, the property in which the accessory apartment is to be located shall be owned under a single deed. G, the owner of the premise must occupy one of the units except for temporary absences. H, not more than one accessory apartment shall be established on a lot. I, sufficient and appropriate for at least one additional parking space shall be provided by the owner to serve the accessory apartment. Said parking space shall be constructed of materials consistent with the existing driveway and to prevent on-street parking. Shall have vehicular access to the driveway, all as set forth in 145-24. J, no occupancy permit shall be granted without accessory apartment conformance to the provisions on Title V of the sanitary, State Sanitary Code 310 CMR 15 and applicable regulations of the Townsend Board of Health. Any accessory apartment intended for occupancy by a person within a disability shall be subject to provisions of MGLC 40A 3. Any accessory apartment by right or special permit shall be required to certify every five years that the original conditions are in effect.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a report from the planning board?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. All right, this is what I was doing at first, that I should be doing now. So, we are an aging population, where in 2035, 40% of us are going to be over 60. As part of a District Local Technical Assistant Grant, and the Monarchus Regional Planning Commission assisted the planning board in facilitating a public forum on housing and writing a draft bylaw on accessory housing. In November 2015, the town of Townsend held a housing forum. The purpose of the public forum was to solicit public input concerning housing. The consensus was to allow accessory apartments without restriction or with fewer instructions. This will allow residents of our town the flexibility in housing opportunities, particularly for our aging population of Townsend, so they are not forced to leave due to lack of affordable housing options. Two additional public hearings were held this year, so residents could comment directly on the draft bylaw. The planning board voted unanimously to support the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. The motion has been made and seconded, and we have heard the planning board's report. Is there a question?
Valerie Goodrich, Chains Road. Could you just give like a one-paragraph summary for some of us who couldn't attain all those meetings on the changes that this puts in place? Just, not the details, but just the basics. Thanks.
Question comes on the motion, Mr. McNally?
The current bylaw that we have with accessory apartments, number one, restricts it to a family member, and requires a special permit that needs to be renewed every five years for that accessory apartment. It also has the condition that, should that loved one no longer need the accessory apartment, it really needs to be either dismantled, or the homeowner has to go into a partnership with a housing authority for future rental. So, in looking at this, our major goal was to be able to, you know, as I age, to maybe move into the accessory apartment and rent my main house for income. Or build an accessory apartment for, you know, some loved ones of mine, that I'm not gonna lose that investment should, you know, I no longer need it. One of the things that we did stress to sort of make, you know, to keep it, to regulate it to some extent, is the homeowner has to live there. So, we didn't want to have something where people would be concerned about someone buying a property and turning it into rentals or stuff like that. The main purpose, you know, that we had, or the goal, and the motivation for this, was to provide options for our seniors to, you know, stay in their house and accessory apartment, easily, you know, make it less restrictive. I hope that was a quick...
Comments come on the motion.
Balcony?
Hold on, I'll go to you next, Ms. Johansson?
Just a quick question, that was two acres. So, Timberly Park is, what, 600 homes in other similar neighborhoods like that? So, that's not gonna apply to us. I'd love to put a tiny home in place on my shed and let my kids pay the tax bill I won't be able to afford soon. So, that's not gonna be an option, right?
Question comes on the motion, Mr. McNally?
It is an option for you in Timberly Park, on a half-acre lot. It will require a special permit, and it doesn't have the restrictions that the current bylaw has, you know, with your tiny house.
Question comes on the motion, I did see Mr. Laqueer earlier? Yeah, I saw the balcony, go to the balcony next?
Thank you, James Laqueer, 171 Fitzgerald Road, Townsend, Massachusetts, obviously. I am 100% in favor of what your proposals are. I believe that some of these numbers should be adjusted, such as the two acres. This 35-foot front inch part is a little bit of an issue for some existing homes. And we're looking at the ages of people that are living longer today. And in some cases, the children are gonna be taking the responsibility of that in-law and/or apartment in maintaining and managing the homes themselves, passed down by their families, all right? I am 100% in favor of all this happening. I think some of the numbers here have to be adjusted a little bit to make it more feasible for all. And of course, the septic systems have to be able to come up, the federal regulations in the town of Townsend, et cetera. But it's a good motion, and everything is there, is fine, but I think it needs some tweaking and fine-tuning, is what I think.
Comments come on the motion. Question in the balcony?
Darlene Sedano, 5 Oak Street. One of the other things that caught my attention with this, and I apologize, I really would have liked to have gone to the public hearing, but I missed it. The current bylaw has that the accessory apartment shall not be larger than, I believe it's 35% of the total building, so that would be the existing structure plus the proposed apartment. So, having an accessory living space that's much smaller than the, than the main portion of the, makes it accessory. So, when I see a limitation of 800 square feet, we're kind of assuming a larger home. What if we had, say, a ranch that had 800 or 900 square feet? You could potentially put an accessory apartment of another 800 square feet on it, and to me, that becomes more of a two-family. So, I just wanted to point that out, and was there any consideration?
Comments come on the motion. Any, any response, Mr. McNally, at all on that, or?
We would have loved to have you come to our meetings. We discussed this quite a bit. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, go through all of it, but we just decided it would be a lot simpler just to keep it at a one number. And that's what we ended up with.
Comments come on the motion, and Ms. Johansson, and Ms. Kell. Then the balcony.
Just a quick question on residential versus commercials, or if you're using your business as a home business, can you, I mean, your home, your property as a business and living out of it, can you do accessory apartments? So, can businesses do, that don't have one today, add on an accessory if it's a residential-type property, or commercial?
Question comes on the motion, Mr. McNally?
They have to be owner-occupied.
So, you could conceivably have a property in a commercial area with a commercial use downstairs and an apartment upstairs with the owner living in it, and they could convert the downstairs to a residential unit, potentially? Okay. I'm sorry, now where was I? Ms. Kell, and then the balcony.
Veronica Kell Meadow Road. I did attend the hearings on this, and I do have one question. I guess, to prevent the town from becoming a rental market, I suppose it's the owner of the premises must occupy one of the units. How is that monitored? How do we know now what homes have accessory apartments? How do we know whether a temporary absence is a temporary absence? Who keeps track of the five-year recertification? And what happens if you sell the place? How do you know if the person is living there? I guess is the question. Thanks.
Question comes on the motion, I don't know, Mr. McNally, if you have any response?
You know, with a lot of our bylaws enforcement, you know, usually results when someone basically files a complaint on something that, you know, you know, my next-door neighbor has an accessory apartment, and he spends, you know, doesn't live there. So, currently, right now, I think we have 30 special permits for accessory apartments. I believe we have a lot more accessory apartments in Townsend than that. So, it's, it's, it's just manage that, you know, I think on an exception basis, where if someone has a concern, they raise it, and it's investigated.
All right, sir in the balcony?
Yes, Christian Oder, 83 Maplewood Drive. And this question goes to, most homes that have the septic designed to the amount of bedrooms in the home. So, if you're adding an accessory apartment, which adds a bedroom to your home, will the homeowner have to upgrade the septic system? Or would the Board of Health allow one of the bedrooms in the home to be, say, deleted or turned into a study, so the homeowner would not have to upgrade their septic?
Question comes on the motion, Mr. McNally?
In the bylaw, the accessory apartment has to comply with our Department of Health regulations and comply with state regulations. So, I'm not an expert on the health department, but I would believe that if you increase the number of bedrooms in the home, then it has to have a suitable septic system for that.
Comments come on the motion, Mr. Biswanger?
Hi, Bill Biswanger. Couple of questions I have. How many people are you gonna allow into this apartment? One, two, three, five? Could have any number you want, you haven't specified numbers. The next thing is, how many apartments are you gonna allow in the town? How many two-families are you gonna have? Are you gonna have it look like Dorchester? Are we gonna have problems with that? Septic systems have to be looked at. You also have a, the acreage is gonna be, is two acres. Right now, we're two acres dry, three acres in the aquifer. You're changing that completely. That's a bylaw that was changed back in the, in the late 1980s, and now you're changing it completely. I think we need to address that fact right there. So, please, let's take a look at that. You're, if you make one change for one person, you're opening up the floodgates to everybody everywhere. I think this needs to be tabled and looked at again at another time.
Comments come on the motion, Ms. Sedano?
Planning Board, don't be mad at me for asking questions. I'm so for trying to help our accessory apartment issue. Been on the zoning board for over 20 years. I sell real estate in town, and on both ends, I see accessory apartments that, and Rich Hanks would probably attest to the fact that the homeowner applied for a family room, and then they invite us in and say, oh, look at, we have an accessory apartment. We have a lot of that, but I guess my other, my real question was, was this created? Did you look at, like, another town? Did you, does somebody else have this bylaw? Because it really looks completely new and different than what we have.
Mr. McNally?
So, the answer to the question is yes. The Monarchus Regional Planning Council assigned a person to this, and they evaluated and looked at all of the bylaws from surrounding communities and drafted this one.
I'm still toggling with what makes it accessory, though. I wish we could do something more with that.
Okay, thanks for the comment.
Ms. Kell?
There, I'm not opposed to accessory apartments, but we do have a master plan process coming up, and it might be worth tabling this and looking at it, maybe looking at our zoning as a whole to see where in town we might want... as a whole, to see where in town we might want something that seems to be as open as this is, as opposed to what we have now. I just think that looking at the town as a whole and figuring out how this fits in might be a good plan.
I'm sorry, one question back there, next to Ms. Kel, Ms. Doold.
Short trip. I, I think I already know the answer to this, but I want to make sure. The way it's written now, it doesn't sound like the deed to the property would be changed. It sounds as if it would be up to real estate agents to convey the information about the rules and regs of who can live in the apartment and the owner living in the building. And I'm, I'm curious, if, if we look at this again, if maybe somehow something could be done with the deed to make it pass more readily on to the future, like, you know, in 30, 40 years, as the properties convey. Thank you.
Mr. Stoffield. Motion to be made to move the question and second it. This will cut off debate. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The article is before you. To amend the zoning bylaws requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Think we'll have to take the counters up. Can I have the counters come forward, please? Let's just do it. All right. All those in favor of the motion on Article 22, please stand. Stand if you want to say you vote yes. Those who want to vote no on Article 22, please stand. All right, the vote was 83 aye, 58 no. The motion does not carry, does not make the two-thirds majority vote. Article 23, I believe. Before we get to the very last article, did, did we have an article that we put on the table earlier tonight? We didn't do that, right? Okay. All right. Article 23. Again, I will, with the meeting's permission, omit reading it and ask for a motion on Article 23. Does anybody object to that?
No.
Okay. No objections. Mr. McNally.
The planning board would like to make a motion to take no action on this article at this time.
Okay. Motion made to take no action on Article 23. There's a second?
Aye.
All right. Motion's made and seconded to take no action on Article 23. All those in favor of taking no action, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Is there any other business before the meeting? Appears to be none. Motion to dissolve would be in order.
Motion to dissolve.
Motion's made and seconded to dissolve. All those in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Meeting's dissolved. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the water. Did you bring it? I think one the other night, because I couldn't get to lay up, and I decided to bring it in. Yeah. Because it seems like it was, they had those meetings, and it's like, I don't know what the bugaboo is about two families, you know? Especially with-
Yeah. Well, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.